Good morning. It is Wednesday, July 16, 2014, 9:00. We're gathered for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I usually add my personal stuff after the meeting, but saying the pledge. And my highlight in my life is I bought a 25-foot flagpole lighted at the county fair, and I put it up, and it's gorgeous.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, we just don't know. Whenever I put something up, I kind of fully expected it to be laying on the ground this morning, but it just looked wonderful. So, now you know. Do we have no one signed up as public comment? Okay, then we'll move right to the consent calendar. Commissioner Carlson?
Mr. Chair, before we do the consent calendar, I would like to make a motion to add an item to our agenda. I'd propose that we add it under Business Services Human Resources, so it would be the new number three, and Public Works would move down to number four. And the item is to consider approval of an order in the matter of the compensation of non-represented employees.
All right, I'll second the motion. Anything to discuss now? Nope?
We'll discuss it when it gets there.
All right, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. I probably should have said, it should have been included on the agenda anyway, and would time out better for a number of different reasons, but that's why it didn't show up. All right, so now the consent calendar.
So, Mr. Chair, we'd move today's consent calendar. Under Board of Commissioners, we have one OLCC application recommended for approval, and that's for Nancy's Burgers East in Salem. Also approve an order of reappointing Tom Ewing and Pete McCallum to the Public Safety Coordinating Council, two terms ending July 31, 2017. Under Community Services, approve amendment number three with the Oregon Department of Education for $644,367 for the Healthy Families Program, and extend the term to June 30, 2015. Under Finance, approve a quick claim deed to convey real property located at 21958 Emma Street Southeast in Mahema, Oregon. And under Information Technology, approve a contract with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for $146,908 for software maintenance covering the purchased products for the county's assessment and taxation system.
Now, I'll second the motion, but I have to know that you normally comment on its contract and not a contact on Tyler Technologies.
Oh, I didn't notice that.
Really? I got one on you once.
Oh, you did, right.
All right, any further discussion? The hearing, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. You have four action items this morning then, and the first is under Business Services Human Resources. Mina Hansen and Amy Rose Fish are here. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, our contract with our largest association--
Excuse me, Mina, would you pull it closer? Thank you.
As you know, our contract with our largest union, the Marion County Employees Association, expired on June 30 of this year. We've been in bargaining with them since December. We have a tentative contract with them. I received word yesterday that the association did ratify that contract, so they have voted to accept the contract as proposed. We're here today to seek the Board's ratification of the same contract. I'll go through just, I believe the Board has a redline version. I'll just hit some of the critical elements. You'll notice that over time, we've worked very diligently to clean up grammatical issues and old language that was inconsequential to the content, but just to make it easier to read. So you'll see throughout some changes in capitalization and grammar, and the association has agreed with us in making those changes. There were some changes made in Article III with regard to the information we provide the association. We discovered that what they were needing and what we were providing didn't necessarily match up, so we have made some adjustments there. There is some changes in the Article VIII, six leave subsection bereavement. These changes were necessary to match up with the changes to the Oregon State law with regard to bereavement leave. The legislature passed a law that changed the amount of time individuals who qualified for Oregon family medical leave were allowed to have for bereavement, so we made some language adjustments to reflect that. Also, under sick leave, we brought our language of who is a family member in closer alignment with the current laws. There was no change to our health insurance cap. We have held fast on that. The Board may recall that after wages, the health insurance costs are the largest portion of our personnel services expense, somewhere in the neighborhood of $20 million, easily outstripping our purse. So we've been trying very hard to hold fast on both our rising premiums and our cap. We have negotiated a 3% COLA effective with the first pay period after ratification of the contract or no later than August 1st, and that's for the first year of the contract, and a 1.5% COLA in the second year of the contract. This would be the first contract in two contract cycles, so we have had two contract cycles without COLAs in them, so this was the first one since then. There was a lot of work done. If you look at Section 8 of Article 11 on page 18, we did a lot of work with regard to pager and cellphone pay. This was kind of, just really needed some housekeeping and some attention. With changes to technology, we have more people rather than, we don't really have pagers anymore. We have people who will call in or remote in, so we needed to really work on reflecting what the current circumstances is and make it really clear when employees got paid, when they were called back, when that pay started, when they could get mileage, when they couldn't get mileage. And so you'll see that there's a lot of work there to really kind of address what the current practice was versus what the language had said. If you look on page 21 of 50, this is still Article 11, Sections 11, 12, and 13, you will see that Section 11, the definition of the lead worker differential, the association wanted to see that placed in the contract. It is an exact duplicate of the language that is currently in the personnel rules, so there's no change there from current practice. They just felt strongly they wanted it spelled out in their contract. Sections 12 and 13, we have clarified the definitions of working out of class and acting in capacity. These were always in the contract, but they were in one paragraph as opposed to split out in two. So the clarity around which was which became sometimes fuzzy, and the association had proposed cleaning this up. I think it provides greater clarity to employees when they're acting in capacity and when they're working out of class. You'll notice under Article 14, Section 1, we made some changes, like I spoke about the mileage. There had been some question about whether employees who were called back should be paid commuting mileage. We have taken care of making that clearer as to the costs of transportation. I don't believe there are any other substantive changes in the remainder of the contract. We did, I should take that back, we did make some changes to the job share provisions in Article 31, page 44, largely to come closer in line with what the personnel rules currently say with regard to job share. We're slowly having to make some adjustments to how we manage job share in the past because of the changes that the Affordable Healthcare Act has made with regard to who is required to have coverage and who are we required to pay coverage for. So we're trying to make sure that we have real bright lines as to when we provide health coverage and when we don't. The other article that may be of interest to you, there are no changes to it, is the temporary employee portion. We agreed to leave it at status quo. As you may know, we are currently in a situation where there is a vote going out to the temporary employees to consider being included in the association. But since that vote has not been finalized, it seemed premature to negotiate any changes to the temporary employee provisions of this contract. The one final item that I think, there are several letters of agreement attached to the contract. Two of these, the Oracle Pay Incentive and the Journeyman's Card and Trades Licenses are existing LOAs. There's no change to those. The one that is new and is a little bit of maybe out-of-the-box thinking for us is the sick leave conversion letter of agreement. We're going to try this for the life of this contract. We have heard from some of our younger employees that they would like more time off, that time off is very important to them, and that the work-life balance issues are important. Marion County, as you know, has a sick leave and a vacation accrual buckets, and those two do not intermingle. Vacation accruals pick up with tenure, but some of the newer tenured employees are still at the two-week accrual rate. So this would allow them to, once a year, convert sick leave into three days of personal leave. It can't be carried forward, it can't be cashed out, but it gives them that opportunity to have a little additional time off. It would account for three additional days. Amy Rose, did you want to add anything about that?
One of the pieces that was discussed about this was also provide an opportunity to, when they convert it, acts as the personal holiday, so it would not carry over to the next year. So it would be an equalized cost, as well as it also provides for some scheduling abilities. So sick leave, as you know, is, you know, it can be called in kind of that day, whereas some of the sites, it may be an opportunity for them to be able to have three days where they would be able to schedule time to do some things, and so that might alleviate some of the challenges that some of the teams have with call-in concerns.
When we looked at this issue with the association, we also noticed that, surprisingly so, how very few sick leave hours our employees had on the books. So the employees that want to take advantage of this will have to have a minimum number of sick leave hours before they can take advantage of it. And we're hoping that we, and HR will keep an eye on it over the next two years, that we're hoping we'll see that the sick leave balances will go up a little, because certainly it is not our desire to have employees taking leave without pay when they're ill. It's not good for them, it's not good for us, and so we're hoping this will create maybe some balance in that area. Do you have any questions on that contract?
I wish I would have written it down. I didn't. I let you go by. The first was a little more talk on temporary, I guess. I'm a little curious, so there'll be a vote, and then if it was positive, then you come back with a--
Right.
--with another version of this contract then?
What we would have is an amendment to this contract, or perhaps even a standalone contract. That would be something we would have to negotiate with the union.
But it would be during the term of this one, though, that--
Correct.
--it wouldn't have to wait till at the end.
No, they would not wait till the end. The ballots are out to the temporary employees, and I think they're due back next week sometime. So we, of course, don't have any hand in that. The Employee Relations Board, or ERB, handles that, and they'll let us know what the vote tally was, and then, once we know, we'll work on developing what we think--
I wish I would have written this down. Right after that, you talked about what, do you recall? Right after the temporary employees? I just had one, and I wish I would have stopped you at the time. It's all right. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Carlson?
I was just going to see what came up. Temporary was the last thing in the contract. I think we did the letters of agreement. No, I just wanted to make a comment, and that is that this is a lot of work. I recognize that. A lot of hours went into it on both sides for labor and management. From what I understand, and of course, the Board does not directly participate, we get reports from you, but we are not at the table, but the reports we got from you, the tone was good this year. People worked in good faith to try to find solutions to issues. It looks like a lot of the housekeeping changes, the more technical changes are positive and will lend clarity or help people in their job situations understand better what the policies and the rules are. Of course, the big issue was the cost of living adjustment, and didn't talk much about that, I think, but how many years is it? Six years since the--
Five for this bargaining unit.
Five for this bargaining unit, right. And then is it six for the ones that we're going to talk about later? So Marion County has held the line for many years, and our employees have understood, you know, really, that we were in very tough times, and the choices that we have are if, when you increase salaries, then there's the concern that you may have to lay people off because that salary, it starts here when you increase it, and then it stays here, and then it increases more each successive year with step increases and other kinds of costs. And so we end up in a situation where we're in 2009-10, where I think we reduced by 30 positions, Marion County, and then employees end up without, their workload goes up because you don't have as many people working, and the service to the community is impacted because people can't do their jobs as well or as quickly or things, you know, back up. So it's, I mean, it's a real issue, but I think that what we have here in this contract that we all agree to is, gives the amount that we're talking about in this particular contract is 3%, right, in the first year, and 1.5% in the second year, and that 3% was designed to represent a little bit of back COLA, I guess, for the years that we held the line. And we have the ability this year, because our revenues are up a bit, to be able to make up for that and to do that, and I feel comfortable with that. The other point that I made, Mina, you talked about the health insurance and how that is such a large cost to the county, and of course, we had, we've had many, many increases over the years in health insurance in the time that I've been here. I think Marion County has, our health insurance plans are considered to be good plans. I mean, we're not, we're not a bare-bones kind of a plan where people are expected to pay huge deductibles, and we have plans where people don't have to pay premium at all, that they, that it's, that they can cover themselves and their families within the allotment that we give. And so in this particular contract, it's $1,346 per employee per month, which we've, I'm not saying that we haven't had to make adjustments over the past several years, and people have had to sacrifice certain aspects of the plan, but people have worked hard to be able to make sure that we have a good plan for people, for our employees within that cap. It was interesting, I read in the newspaper this morning that the Salem Kaiser School District just completed their negotiations with their classified staff, and that they had allotted an extra $25 per employee per month for health insurance, bringing them up to $1,140 per employee, and I knew that ours was in the $1,300 range. I'm thinking, okay, so, you know, we've gone up a little faster than they have, and I know things have been tough for school districts as well in terms of the budget. So I think, even though I know that there, at one point, there was a desire on the part of the employees to increase those, that cap for health insurance, I think that $1,346 is adequate to maintain the good plans that we have for our employees this year. So I want to thank you, and Amy Rose, and Gloria, and all the other people that were on the bargaining group for bringing this forward and coming to a resolution in July. That's very good, and without a lot of conflict, and so, good job to everyone.
And I would like to just say that you are correct. I am very pleased with how the bargaining went, the tenure of, the tenor of the bargaining. Both sides worked really hard, and our association partners did an excellent job in reaching across the table.
If I could, I'd probably just paraphrase the things you just said, but in my own way, certainly echo what you said. But I start out with, you know, we've been putting off for a number of years, understand the patience of employees. This is where it gets hard, and Commissioner Carlson got into it a little bit. We don't want to preclude the abilities of the county to do things in the future, and just, there's a compounding effect that happens in just the sheer number of employees, essentially 1,300 employees, so it gets up into some real dollars real quick. But to reward our current employees, to keep our current employees, and then to also remain competitive with the rest of the state, I'm fully convinced this is where we need to be. And then I did too. I'd like to thank everybody, Gloria, Mina, Amy, and John Latimer should get mentioned too, and probably more importantly, the employees for getting through this process well thought out and with the best interests of the county in mind. So that, those comments will really apply to all three of the action items we have, so I probably won't say anymore, but I'm happy with what we have in front of us, but I always worry about the future.
So, Mr. Chair, with all of that said, I would move that the Board ratify the Marion County Employee Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, which is effective July 1, 2014, and extends through June 30, 2016.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All right, hearing, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Our second item, much the same, is consider ratification of the Marion County Oregon Nurses Association Collective Bargaining Agreement effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2016. Again, Mina, Amy, whoever.
Yes, we went and started the negotiations with the Oregon Nurses Association in March of this year, the contract ending June 30, 2014, and this is a much smaller unit than MCEA is. There's only about 20 nurses that this collective bargaining agreement covers. It has about 24 articles within the contract. Most of the changes that were made were, again, similar to what we were doing with MCEA regarding just some cleaning up of some language and making sure that we have some of the updated grammar and capitalization corrected. We also, I'll just briefly go over some of the other changes that we had in Article 4, Hours of Work, on page 3. We were really trying to per the Board's direction to move away from the 37 and 1/2-hour work weeks, as well as just the business needs of the department, is to give, make some language updates so that it gives the department the ability to create 40-hour work week positions as needed when vacancies arise and as they have the funding to do so. Going into Article 9 on page 13, we also did some updates to the protected leave language, Section 6 and Section 7, just to, again, update related to the laws that changed in January related to family medical leave and the Oregon family medical leave, related to bereavement as well. Then in Article 10, Section 4, we also had a discussion regarding the health medical insurance cap, and we held fast again with the $1,346, and they have a Me Too clause that if there were any changes to MCEA, then they would also get the same changes. Then in Article 12, wages, we have one change on page 18, the standby compensation pay went from 50 cents to $1.50 per hour, and that's just when a nurse is required to be on call, and so looking at some of our comparables, this was a reasonable adjustment to be competitive in that area. In Section 6 of Article 12, we also have the cost of living adjustments, and that is similar to MCEA as far as the 3% this year of the contract effective, the first pay period after ratification, as well as a 1.5% cost of living adjustment in the next year of the contract. We have two letters of agreement with the Oregon Nursing Association, and the first one is on market reviews. As you know, we've had discussion here in past contract cycles around just the nature of the industry with nursing and how difficult the cost of wages are. They continually go out of market, and in the county, we do try to review positions and classifications every five years, but for nursing, that just seems really too far apart, particularly for our nurse practitioners and our public health nurses. And so we agreed to a letter of agreement that we would reassess and do a market review because they had their last one done in 2012 during the last contract cycle, so doing one next year would be a little sooner than our five-year mark, but we felt that was reasonable to do three years out due to the industry and the market with nursing. And then also, we have the sick leave conversion letter of agreement, similar to MCEA. We had some of the same concerns coming in with the employees of ONA and in recruiting newer nurses into the field and into the public health field. They felt that this would be something that would provide an advantage.
Are any questions?
Mr. Chair, I could just ask one, just regarding your last couple of comments. 12 years ago, however long it was, when I was in the legislature, I know there were a lot of studies coming out and concerns about nursing shortages and the inability in the healthcare field to get, you know, limited programs, people not coming out of programs, not being able to get into programs because they were so limited, and then the few nurses coming out. Are we impacted by that still today? I mean, is it in recruitment, are we looking at shortages in nurses?
It definitely is still creating an impact, and one of the challenges we have is the public health nurse industry and just an understanding of that in compared to wanting experience in hospitals and different environments. And so it's really about trying to figure out as well, in addition to our recruitment efforts around compensation and benefits, is also around exposing people to what public health does, and it's a very unique field, and so trying to balance those, I think that's where we definitely have a challenge in the industry that still continues today.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, I mean, in, the healthcare field itself is growing so rapidly with the Affordable Care Act. I mean, we just see new medical offices sprouting up here in Salem all over the place, and I know when I go over to Boise, same thing, so I don't think it's just true here in Oregon or here in Salem, it's across the nation. And then, and in that, kind of reformation of healthcare, there are a lot of new classifications of nurses that have come out, so certified nurses assistants, and I can't name all of them, but people go through programs and get different levels. Is our public health nurse, are our classifications responding to that at all, or, I mean, are we pretty much set in a certain set of classifications? Are we looking at whether or not some of these new types of nursing professions fit with public health? I was just curious.
Yes, I know that the nursing department is looking at a lot of different ways in the restructuring, especially with, you know, just in the leadership structures and the clinical supervision, how that all looks and fits. And one of the challenges we have now is nurse practitioners used to be kind of unique to some of the public health in some of those areas, but now that's a very common usage instead of paying the rates of a physician. And so looking at how we can still continue to compete, and are there other classifications that we may be able to utilize to take advantage of what the changes are?
Thank you. Interesting field.
It is.
I know that will continue to present challenges as we roll forward, but we want to thank all of our nurses too, because they play a very important role in our health department. So, Mr. Chair, I would move ratification of the Marion County Oregon Nurses Association, our ONA Collective Bargaining Agreement, effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2016.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion? Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. The third item related is the item we added, where we consider approval of an order in the matter of compensation of non-represented employees. Gloria, Mina, anybody that's prepared, go ahead.
Commissioners, the last, there are-- Commissioners, the last, with the ratification of the MCEA contract, we had growing concerns about our ability to recruit and retain supervisors and other non-represented professional staff. We estimated that the compression related to not making some wage adjustments to those groups would make it extremely hard to fill positions. We did some preliminary research and found that we would have pennies between positions. In addition, the non-represented employees have not received a cost of living increase since July of 2007. Like the rest of the employees, they understood that we needed to hold fast during some tight economic times. We are asking that the board approve an order to match the COLAs that we have given to the bargaining units, to maintain the parity between the positions, with the 3% effective after the, the first pay after the order is signed, and then a 1 and 1/2 in the second year.
I don't have anything. Anybody else?
No, I think that this, this is something that has been, what Marion County has traditionally done, is that when our, I believe our largest bargaining unit, which is Marion County Employees Association, MCEA, that we just passed the bargaining agreement for, gets a cost of living adjustment, that the management gets a commensurate one. It's not guaranteed, it's just something that we have always done, because we haven't done it for five years. I think we were sort of, kind of, a little bit of a quandary, we had to look back about, so how, you know, do we take this as a board order? How do we do it? And so, appreciate, I think Gloria, you put the finishing touches on this within the last 24 hours, and helped get this before the board, so that we could do this in conjunction with the other actions that we've taken today with regard to the cost of living adjustments. And I do know that we have excellent supervisors, managers, department heads in Marion County, and that they likewise deserve to stay within the market. And so, this is a piece of that, certainly not the entire puzzle, but a piece of the puzzle in terms of helping move that forward. So, Mr. Chair, with that, I would move approval of the order that adjusts the compensation of the county's unrepresented management and confidential employees.
All right. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Just make sure that that non-represented covers all.
It's unrepresented and confidential.
All right.
And it lists all the units in the order.
It does, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, and it also implements the Budget Committee's recommendations or decisions regarding the compensation of the elected officials.
Okay. Anything else? Now, call a question. If I haven't seconded it, I will. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you all for your work, and now we'll get back to work.
Thank you.
Our last item this morning is under Public Works. Consider adoption of an administrative ordinance, grant zone change, case ZC 14001, Phoenix Investment Group, Clerk's File 5686. And Joe Fenimore, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, this is Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is an applicant, was an application to change his zone from CR, commercial retail, to CG, commercial general, on 2.57 acres located at 4170 and 4180 Silverton Road Northeast. The applicant owns an RV park on an adjacent property and wants to develop this property, a portion of this property, with many storage warehouses and covered RV storage. Since these uses are not allowed in the CR zone, in order to develop the property as he wishes, they would need to change his zone to CG. The hearings officer conducted public hearings on this matter on April 2 and April 16, 2014. On June 13, the hearings officer issued a recommendation to the board to grant the zone change subject to conditions. The hearings officer determined that not all of the uses in the CG zone were appropriate for the property, because a small section of its eastern property line is bordering Landzone Single Family Residential, and recommended a limited use overlay be applied to the property. The hearings officer analyzed all uses permitted outright or conditionally in the CG zone, and determined which of those were appropriate on this property. The conditions also include right-of-way dedication, street improvements, and access for the county to maintain or repair the public drainage ditch and pipes crossing the property. I have spoken with both the applicant and his representative, and they have no concerns about any of the recommended conditions. The board received the hearings officer's recommendation and held the application for the mandatory appeal period. No appeals were filed. Notice adoption of this administrative ordinance was made on July 9, 2014, and is now back to you for final consideration and adoption. Options for the board to consider include adopting the ordinance as written, direct staff to prepare a modified ordinance for consideration, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, I read through this last night. I had seen the hearings officers reported it had come through several times on consent when we were scheduling, and I had kind of scanned it, but I hadn't read it carefully. So I took the time to do that last night. And it's interesting, because this is the same company that we were just dealing with the noise ordinance about last week. So having been out to look at the RV park, I could kind of envision the next door, you know, I think he had, Tom called, Todd called, had actually mentioned that that was something that he was, was working on. And it looks like in the process of going through all of these different aspects, I mean, I just want to say for people that might be listening outside of this room, the hearings officer goes through an immense amount of various code, and, I mean, there's, zone changes have different sections of code, and then trying to see there, like, there were two different kind of chains of approvals that had to be done, and each one had to have evidence and be met. And all of them were met or could be met with conditions. But it looked like there was some disagreement in some of the various conditions that were being requested either by Public Works or others that were negotiated during the process. And it appeared that everyone was, that everyone was okay with how it landed. So I just wanted to verify, Joe, for you, in those areas where the applicant initially disagreed with some of the conditions, now the applicant is okay with those conditions. Sidewalks was one, I think. In Public Works, there was a water pipe, you know, sometime in the future, we have to change them out. And so, what, they came back with something, and the hearings officer said, no, it's too late, you have to do this one, so...
Yeah, that's correct. And I did speak with them, and they were, they were pleased with the conditions. We're not objecting to it at all.
All right. And Public Works is okay with how it landed also?
Yes.
You can do what you need to do, and all of that. Okay.
Correct.
So, that was my only question.
I do have one, just kind of related. There was no public opposition or neighbors, et cetera, any issues that surfaced. I couldn't see them in here.
That's correct. Only the applicant and his representatives were at the hearing, and there was no information submitted in writing, so there was no opposition.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board adopt the ordinance in the matter of the application of Phoenix Investment Group, Inc. And in the ordinance, it grants a zone change from CR, commercial retail, to CG-LU, commercial general, limited use, subject to the conditions that are identified in Exhibit B, which is part of, which is the, a portion of the hearings officer's, well, actually, Exhibit B is after the hearings officer's report. So it's listed both in the hearings officer's report and in the attachment that's labeled Exhibit B.
All right. And I'll second it. Further discussion? Hear or see, and all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon, you're just here to observe?
Making sure that Joe does his job correctly, right?
All right, thank you. Well, that ends our action items. There's no public hearing this morning. The last thing to do then is to read the places we'll be together, working in the coming week. We've been kind of two pages. This is a shorter list. Tomorrow morning, 8:00, City of Salem, Marion County meeting at the Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street in Salem. At 11:30 to 1:00 on Thursday the 17th, National Parole and Probation Officer Week at the Marion County Work Center, 4040 Omsal Highway in Salem. Let's see, there's one missing, I think, from Thursday. Maybe, I don't know. Do you have it down? It has to do with our lobbyist, talking about federal agenda, like 10:00?
I don't think that's tomorrow.
Is it just me?
It's on 24th of July.
Oh, the next week. The next week. That explains it. Okay. Then, Monday, 8:30 to 9:00, Commissioners Calendar Review in Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor of Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street in Salem. That's followed at 9:00 on Monday the 21st by Management Update, also in the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, 8:30 to 10:00, Community Corrections Board, Silverton Conference Room, 555 Court Street, 5th floor. And then next week, next Wednesday, at 9:00 is our regular board meeting, and that's here in the Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street. And then the last item, Wednesday, the 23rd, 4:30 to 6:00, a Catholic community service event at Woodman, Woodman Sea Park, 4629 Sunnyside Road Southeast in Salem. So, that takes care of things.
That's about where I live, is Woodman Sea.
How do you say it even?
Woodman Sea.
Isn't that nice? All right. So, I know you are always involved in the fair. You must have some little report you'd like to give.
It was a wonderful fair. Now, unfortunately, the weather was just a bit warm, but...
And then a little bit wet Sunday.
And then Sunday, there was thunder and lightning and rain in the morning. But overall, there were a lot of people at the fair. They all looked like they were having a good time. The Bob's Burger, I'm still reading things on Facebook about that, and the pictures that are posted on Facebook, those are not the, the exception. That line in front of that Bob's Burgers was long.
Yes.
All day long, all evening long. It never let up for the entire fair. And there was a post, I wasn't there Sunday afternoon, but at 4:00, between 4:00 and 6:00, we always open up the fair, so there's no gated admission. The last two hours are free to the public.
When they're just coming in to get a burger?
And they said, oh, yeah, they said that people just poured in at 4:00 to go get their burger at Bob's. So I thought that was great.
I saw one call to reopen a store somewhere in Salem, so that'd be nice. Maybe they'll think about it.
Yeah, well, they will be at the state fair as well. So we, and Bob's was not the only thing we had at the fair, obviously. We had car cruise in, and dog show, and of course, the 4H and FFA, I guess, had a very successful market auction at the, I think that was Saturday night. We had great entertainment. I was there both Friday night and Saturday night.
It was like a quarter million dollars that they raised, if I saw that report, right? That's, that's pretty major. That's a lot of college fund right there.
Right, no, and they put in a lot of work to do that. And it's a great youth development, positive youth activity kind of thing. We always talk about that, but I mean, that is the epitome of that. So, yeah, it was a great event. Sweeney Promotions did an excellent job, the Fair Board, I saw those four Fair Board members, they were there all day, every day, working hard. We had staff in the office, Denise Clark, and we also hire, or we have some temporary staff for the fair. And then, I think Shirley Gardner came over, she's working at the dog shelter now.
Wonderful.
So she was in the office, kind of fun to reconnect with her. Tammy Getch, who is the community services director now, spent a lot of time out there, a lot of effort on the fair, and much of the success can be credited to her. She got a lot of new ideas and community engagement with the fair, so. I think it was a success all the way around.
Certainly all the board, they do a lot of work, and I want to thank them for that. But I was watching my young cousin, our lead volunteer, Dylan Wells, and he seemed quite active, and seems to be some, putting in some refreshing ideas. But I think he enjoyed it himself, because a Facebook post I saw was, you know, it was great. So, that's, that's as good as it gets.
So we went out, my son and I, on Friday night and took our grandson, my son Brandon, and he is five, going on six, and he just had an excellent time. He was, he spent most of the time in the inflatables area. So he climbed up this big shark ladder, and then they slide down and come out the shark's mouth. And he rode on a bull, like a little electric bull. But you, you have to actually be able to jump on the bull to be allowed to ride it. That's one of the requirements, the prerequisites for being a bull rider in the inflatables area. And there were several children that were quite a bit bigger and older than Brandon, that got up there and had a real tough time getting on the bull.
Oh, serious?
So we were thinking, oh, boy, you know, is he going to make it? And we were kind of giving him hints about how he might just climb up the head or something, because it was downright. And he'd scouted it out. He figured it out, and he got up just first try. So we were pretty proud of him for that. And then they had this great big, kind of like a wading pool, where they blow up these big bubbles. Did you see that?
I thought maybe that's what you would talk about for inflatables, yeah.
Yeah, and then the kids get inside of them?
Yeah, I didn't see any adults in there. I thought it looked like it'd be kind of fun, but I figured I wouldn't float, so I didn't...
Well, I'm just wondering, like, it's got to be airtight, because no water gets in. So how long would you live in that?
Well, I hope they don't forget them, but they look, I watched it quite a while, and everybody in there was just all smiles. And someone just lay down, float, and then, and then a lot of them liked to kind of, I don't know how you'd call it, spin it or walk across the water. And it looked like fun.
Well, it's hard to stand up. I mean, like, he would run, and then he'd fall down, he'd run again, and he'd topple down. So it was, but it was, he hit the car, and he was out after we got done. So that was a very good evening of exercise for a five-year-old. And we had, he had ice cream too, dairy, women's ice cream. He liked.
Me too. It's a problem. I was going to bring my grandkids down, and then Sunday, when I came in for the cheese, and we had a number of good cheesecakes, by the way. Oh, I meant to write the name of the person, but it was very good, the top winner. I got caught finishing the sample, but you can't just leave it there. That's like wasteful.
Yeah, that would be.
It was good. And I think we had eight or nine entries, and pretty happy with all of them. It was fun time. Yeah, Miss Marion Dairy, and I, oh, bless me, I can't remember her name, but she's from almost the Newburgh area, St. Paul. And, small world thing, she was just on an all-star team in basketball. And I happened to see from another cousin who was on the same team, and it was kind of like, oh, yeah, I know who you are, but then I can't remember her name. Yeah, but she was nice. And so, we, we chose to win it pretty easily. It didn't take a lot of coercion. They all agreed. Plus, they saw that sample had disappeared, so I kind of knew where I was heading.
Well, John said he couldn't go to the Kaiser breakfast, and that was Thursday morning, because he had to be at the fair. And I said, well, greeters is on Friday. Well, you know, what do you have Thursday morning? He says, pickles.
Yep.
So he was out there tasting pickles. I didn't hear how that came out, but...
There was some, he does it all. He does it all. But he did say, oh, I do remember the cake in that. He did pies and a cake, and it was a chocolate cake with a lot of frosting, including some kind of toffee. And, and they were having trouble not taking extra samples of that one, too. So, I have to have my fun, and that's something I look forward to every year. And again, the fair was a lot of fun.
It was great.
So now, we're just into our summer.
Although we do have striking out meth coming out. This is July 25, so it's a week from Friday, Volcano Stadium. Gates open 5:15. Lots of participation from all of our public safety partners, fire and police.
And Polk County this year, if I hear.
Marion and Polk Counties, right. Bringing youth in from all over the area. But that'll be good, too.
Well, I can't think of anything else. Got my flag up. World's pretty complete. I know, I'll show you a picture. And since there's nothing else, I'll call this meeting adjourned.